Councilmember Broadwater?
Here.
Councilmember Doe?
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
Mayor Potem Jones?
Here.
Mayor Dalton?
Here. I will have the invocation by Keith Jones, Public Works Director, and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Jones. Okay, Mr. Jones, I see we have a business spotlight presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, the Garden Grove City Council presents its Quarterly Business Spotlight, highlighting local businesses within the Garden Grove community. This evening's recognition goes to the city's longtime bowling center. Would Bob Edwards of the AMF Valley View Lanes please come forward? Bob Edwards is the General Manager of the Lanes located on the west side of town at 12141 Valley View Street. The alley has been an entertainment fixture in the Garden Grove community for nearly forty years, creating an atmosphere of fun, excitement, competition, and teamwork for people of all ages. In 1998, the Lanes were franchised by AMF, the world's leading bowling company. AMF manufactures a complete line of equipment, including automated lanes, pins, balls, and shoes, and operates more than five hundred bowling centers in the United States and nine other countries. According to Mr. Edwards, the franchise significantly increased the value of the business. Valley View Lanes is committed to community outreach. For the past six years, they have been the host of the Garden Grove Chamber's annual bowling tournament fundraiser, and also support the Boys and Girls Club, youth scout groups, and local high school fundraisers. In addition, Valley View Lanes has a meeting room that they provide at no charge to nonprofit community groups in the West Garden Grove area. Last summer, Bob did some remodeling and installed forty-two-inch flat-screen monitors above all the Lanes. Patrons can now enjoy Dollar Mania Monday through Thursday, paying a $5 cover charge and a $1 per game. The more daring competitor can enjoy extreme bowling on Friday and Saturday nights from 9:00 p.m. to 1:30 a.m. While the letters "AMF" may have originally stood for "American Machine and Foundry," according to Mr. Edwards, they now stand for "Always Means Fun." At this time, the mayor and the city council would like to present Bob Edwards with a certificate of recognition and gift for being honored as the October Business Spotlight. Garden Grove salutes AMF Valley View Lanes as an outstanding business in the community.[269.02][269.02](APPLAUSE).
You can do that in a few minutes. And that's kind of a nice thing, so I want you to see that. Here's a certificate of recognition. Thanks for everything you do in our community. We appreciate it. We'll shake hands with you and then have a photo taken and hand you a few minutes if you'd like to make some comments. Okay? Get your photo for posterity.
One, two. One more. One, two.
Please have your words.
Well, he pretty much said everything I could have thought of saying, but thank you very much for this recognition. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.[349.87][349.87](APPLAUSE).
Okay, next is Elizabeth Slade of Update.
Yes, we'd like to welcome our Congresswoman, Loretta Sanchez, to provide an update for our community.
Hello, and thank you so much, Mayor, and council members, once again, for allowing me, every time that I come home for a long stretch of time, to come before you and to inform you of some of the things that we have been doing in the Congress. I know that it's been a very tough year for a lot of people. One of the biggest problems that we've had in this area, as you know, is some of the people losing their homes and a lot of foreclosures going on, and so we have put a lot of effort into trying to do loan modifications. The banks haven't been too forthright with a lot of that. We've just voted a program about two months ago to actually help people who are unemployed with some of their house payments, and we just got the new information. It will start, applications will start next month, and so I encourage people to call my office here in Garden Grove to get the information if they've been unemployed for a long time and they're still trying to look for work, and it's a possibility that we may be able to qualify them for that program. As you know, we also put some money into the city to help with neighborhoods where there were a lot of foreclosures going on, because what happens is when a home is left like that, that grass isn't cut, it starts to deteriorate, and it brings down the value of all the homes in the neighborhoods. And I know, for example, in particular, we sent over a million dollars to the city of Garden Grove with respect to some of that housing and trying to get people and bring the houses up and get people qualified to get into some of the homes that had been taken over. At the beginning, just in the last month, the new credit card bill of rights has taken effect, so I encourage people to call my office with respect to that. I don't know if you know what that means, but it's, you know how credit card companies are if you, I mean, for my, for example, if I charge something on the second of the month, and then my bill comes on the thirtieth of the month, and I pay it, and then the next month I charge again, and now the bill comes on the twenty-fifth of the month, and the next time the bill comes on the twentieth of the month, and so they're shortening the period, and why would they do that? Because they want you to miss a payment, because when you miss a payment, then you start to get all these late fees and everything going on, and that's how a lot of them have been making their money. Or you have a balance on your credit card, and from one month to the next, they raise the interest rate on your credit card on the existing balance. All of those types of things are no longer legal under the Credit Card Bill of Rights, the bill that we passed, so again, I encourage people to contact my office here in Garden Grove to get the information so you know your rights, and we can help you with some of that. Over the last two years, we've passed sixteen bills in the Congress with respect to trying to help small businesses, because that's been one of the biggest problems, is that credit has dried up. So it used to be that if you wanted to get a loan from the Small Business Administration, for example, now ninety percent of the loan is guaranteed by SBA. The smallest loan we used to have was about $200,000. We now put in a small micro lending program where smaller businesses who just need fifteen thousand or twenty-five thousand or fifty thousand can come and get a loan, and we cut back a lot of the paperwork. So again, for some of the smaller businesses here, please come and see our office and see if we can't get you over to the SBA and help you with some of that. We passed a health care bill, as many of you know. Some people like it, some people don't like it. I'm not here to argue about that tonight. I'm here to tell you what started this past month that will actually help people here. If you have health care right now through a larger company, or a government, or school, or what have you, and you have a child who has a pre-existing condition, like they're autistic, or they have asthma, a lot of them aren't covered. Starting this past month, in the middle of September, there are no pre-existing conditions for children. They can and must be put on your family plan, and the health care company can't charge you anymore. So again, come to our office, we can get you the information, and we can help you with your company to ensure you can get all of your children on. Children, let's say somebody went off to college, and they've graduated, and they haven't been able to find a job, maybe they're twenty-two or twenty-three years old, and, you know, the old policy was that if they were in college, they probably were covered on your insurance plan, but once they graduated from college, they would no longer be covered. Now, starting this past month, up to age twenty-six, any child can be covered on your, none of your children can be covered up to age twenty-six on your plan, again, under the family plan. And of course, and Bruce Broadwater will know this, because he knows a lot about insurance, but most of us, actually all of us, have been under the million-dollar cap of our lifetime. In other words, no insurance company or insurance companies would cover more than a million dollars' worth of expenses on a person in a person's lifetime. So if you've got a heart attack, and it costs a million and a half, they'd cover a million, then you could never get health insurance again. Starting this month, there are no caps any longer for those, for people, and people will be covered under insurance. So those are all good. On the Medicare system, which is the government system that we have, all of those apply to everybody else, but under Medicare, starting this month, starting October first, all preventative care is free. So annual physical tests, your mammogram, tests for other forms of cancer, diabetes tests, supplies if you're diabetic, all of this will now be free. No copay, no nothing. Why? Because we want people to be healthy, we want them to get checked out, we don't want to say, "I didn't get my mammogram because it costs $50 or what have you for me to go to the doctor." It's all free now, we want people to get themselves checked up, and because we want to help you early if you have something, not late, when it costs so much more to try to treat people. So pretty excited about that. We also, of course, were able to bring back monies, and I always report about some of the things that we've done here. If you've gone out by the 91 freeway out towards Corona, you'll know that we're widening that freeway, we brought back the money from the federal government. Some of you have heard about the rail. It's $2.2 billion that President Obama has designated for this area of Orange County to Los Angeles to build the new rail, and those jobs, the Orange County Business Council has said that over the next ten years, that will be 57,000 jobs, that starts next year. And of course, if you've driven on the 5 freeway lately, you'll know that we finished the widening of the 5 freeway finally, all the way to the county line, we just opened that last week, that was with some federal funds also, and of course, we also have that Ginatri flyover that we've got in Anaheim, we'll be cutting the ribbon on that in the next few, but, so I know a lot of people here use the 5 freeway. And of course, the last thing would be the groundwater replenishment system, many of you have been on board with that. We continue to fund some of that from the federal government. That is incredibly important, especially as we see some of these water wars that are really going on. As you know, Southern California, most of it, is really a desert, and so one of the few clean, environmentally clean areas of water, a water table, is the area that we are on, here in the northern portion of the county, as it extends down to and stops about right before Irvine. Because we have this water table for the last few years, well, now for fourteen years, I was one of the first to get on board and bring back the funds, and so now, when you flush, we send the water, we get it treated three different ways, we put it back into the ground, and three years later, the residents here are drinking it. What that means is, we have, we will not have or be part of all the water wars that are going on, that water war we have going on about where the money, where the water from the Colorado River will go, or where the Sacramento Delta waters will flow to and who's going to get to use those. All of those things, eighty-five percent of our water is taken care of by this water that we have underneath us, so we're pretty thrilled about that. So again, a lot of these projects, we have worked with you, the school district here, Garden Grove School District, has received over $38 million for its programs to try to keep some of the schools open and help some of our special needs kids and other things like that. And of course, I'm very proud of the city for having picked up over one and a half million dollars for the whole electrical, solar conservation project that we have here now for the city. So a lot of exciting things going on, a lot of things that we've tried to do to create jobs, we continue to move forward on that, and again, it's been a pleasure to work with some of you here on the city council and with, of course, always your city staff, who are very professional and diligent, and we thank you for working together with us as we try to make lives better for people here in Garden Grove.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.[967.06][967.06](APPLAUSE).
Okay, 3C.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a report from the Orange County Human Relations Commission, and if Carol Turpin will please come forward.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mayor Dalton and city council members, and here, there's a happy birthday to Councilmember Jones, I want to say happy birthday to you, and to city staff members and Garden Grove community members. It's a pleasure always for me to come here annually to report on the work that Orange County Human Relations is doing within the county, and I'm here tonight to update you about our role countywide, what we've been doing, as well as specific programs that we've been having available for Garden Grove community residents. As you know, Orange County Human Relations, Human Relations in partnership with Orange County Cities charts a course to our future, where we're made strong by our diversity, rather than being split into factions based on those differences. And we do this by mediating conflict, creating safe, inclusive neighborhoods and schools, developing diverse leaders, and building understanding and respect among all residents. And many of our services are countywide, some of those cannot be broken down by city, and those include the Sheriff's Academy Training, Human Relations Training at the Sheriff's Academy, our Hate Crime Network trainings that are open to the public, community forums and educational programs that we have available, and we also host an annual awards ceremony where we recognize individuals, cities, schools, and community policing efforts that are doing outstanding human relations work. And that's also a wonderful event I would invite all of you to attend every year. I did pass out our copy of our annual report, which I am reporting on fiscal year 2009 and 2010, so I hope you have a chance to take a look at that. Some specific activities that we've been doing within Garden Grove this past year, we mediated 293 cases in the community or courts where one of the parties was a resident of Garden Grove. One story I'd like to share with you, a Garden Grove father called Orange County Human Relations with concerns regarding custody and visitation of his children, and he was under the impression that his wife might take them on a trip out of town without his permission. And with the assistance of a mediator from O.C. Human Relations, both parties clarified the understanding of their existing custody and visitation schedule, and the mother agreed to inform him of any special trips that might be out of town. And this is just one example of the ways that we mediate conflict within the community and build understanding, and in this instance, also help to save money by mediating outside of the court system, and helps save the county money that way. And while we work to mediate conflict within the county in a proactive manner, as I just talked about, we also document cases where Human Relations takes a turn for the worse, and that's through our annual hate crime report. This year, we did document seventy-seven cases of hate crimes this past year, and specifically in Garden Grove, there were six documented hate crimes and one hate incident that is not a hate crime. And we did this in conjunction with Garden Grove Police and the authorities here. We also help build a sense of community with Garden Grove residents and staff through our Hate Crime Victim Assistance Partnership with other local nonprofits, and we held, this year, we held a conference at the Coastline College in Garden Grove, a hate crime conference, which I attended, it was great, and that, over a hundred people attended that conference just down the street. I'm also very proud to talk to you about the work that we're doing with our youth. Orange County Human Relations is, has a nationally recognized model for building positive intergroup relations through programs like Bridges, and that's solely focused on building leadership skills within our youth. Over a thousand youth from Garden Grove High School and Irvine Intermediate School participated in our Bridges Nonviolence Programs this year. Two Garden Grove youth participated in our leadership program, and this includes a summer camp, and also a year-long program where they build leadership skills all year long. Some of our youth this year also came up with an idea of building, creating a video that was called "What's Up With Adults?", and they were talking about the need to having civility and being able to hear and listen to each other, and they came up with that idea on their own, and that's also posted on our website, if you'd like to take a look at that. Over 219 Garden Grove students participated in our Day-Long Walk in My Shoes Symposium, we held those at UCI and at CSU Fullerton, and this is where they learn about respect, tolerance, and making a difference in their schools and communities. So in conclusion, I just want to state that while our society may be tested with international events, we've all gone through a lot of difficult economic times in the last two years, and a rapidly changing demographics, it's through the investment in the partnership between Orange County Human Relations and the cities of Orange County that we are taking positive steps to address our challenges of our civility and our unity. So we look forward to partnering with you in this next year, and we thank you for your partnership in our fiscal year '09 and '10, and by working together, we know that we can make Orange County and Garden Grove a better place for all people to live and work, and we feel that that's the way that everybody wins. And finally, I'd just like to recognize the city of Garden Grove for your partnership this year with a certificate of recognition in your efforts to collaborate with us and the good work that you are doing with your Orange, with Human Relations efforts. So I thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, before I go to oral communications, I'm going to pull item number 6A of the consent items. A proclamation recognizing October 24th, 2010 as World Polio Day. I see there's quite a few representatives here from the Rotary Club, so I'm going to read a couple of the wheresses, and then if your representative would like to come up and have a photo taken and make some comments, we can afford you some time for that. Okay, this is a proclamation proclaiming World Polio Day, October 24th, 2010. Whereas Garden Grove Rotary Club World Polio Day, October 24th, is a positive initiative to create awareness and educate the citizens of Garden Grove about the vital importance to eradicate polio worldwide. Rotary Club members are business, professional, and community leaders who provide humanitarian service, encourage professional and community leaders, or excuse me, who encourage high ethical standards and help build goodwill and peace in the world. And the Garden Grove Rotary Club chartered on April 15th, 1953, as one of 32,000 Rotary Clubs that exist today, proudly serving in more than 200 countries and geographical areas that initiate service projects to address today's challenges. And polio cases have been reduced by 99% since Rotary International began its mission to eradicate the disease. Today, only four countries, Afghanistan, India, Nigeria, and Pakistan, are still afflicted by the epidemic. Due to the efforts of Rotary and its partners, the world is on a threshold of ending polio forever, making it only the second disease after smallpox to be eradicated. And whereas Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation awarded $355 million to Rotary International a global effort to eradicate polio, $200 million of which is a challenge grant. Polio eradication has been Rotary's top priority since 1985, with more than $1.2 billion contributed to the effort. In 2009, Bill Gates praised Rotary International for providing the volunteers, advocates, and donors who have helped to reduce the number of polio cases by saying, "The world would not be where it is without Rotary, and it won't get where it needs to go without Rotary." The Garden Grove Rotary Initiative is one more community effort encouraging citizens of Garden Grove to support the goal of Rotary International. The world stands firmly on a threshold of victory, thanks to the achievements of the last 25 years. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Garden Grove City Council does hereby proclaim October 24th, 2010, as World Polio Day in Garden Grove. The city of Garden Grove commends the Garden Grove Rotary Club in their crusade to achieve a polio-free world, the ultimate gift to children everywhere. If one of you would come forward, please.
Well, on behalf of the Rotary Club, I'd like to thank the city council for the proclamation. Mayor Dalton, it must be very, it is very fine print, you said an awful lot about Rotary's effort to eradicate polio. Right now, there are just four countries where polio is endemic, which means that it occurs yearly, has never been eradicated, but unfortunately, it's able to spread to neighboring countries. From Nigeria, recently spread to Angola and the Democratic Republic of the Congo. From India, spread to, neighboring to Zekistan. So the purpose of recognition of World Polio Day is to make sure that the world is not getting complacent, since most parts of the world haven't seen a case of polio in a very long time. But if Rotary and its partners were to stop the effort to eradicate polio, it would rapidly recur and would spread very rapidly, and again, would be a scourge of the world. So not only is Garden Grove designating October 24th as World Polio Day, many city councils around the world are also doing the same thing, and it's a worldwide World Polio Day to make sure that the world doesn't get too complacent and that this effort to eradicate it doesn't stop until polio really is eradicated. Again, thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for everything that Rotary does. Thank you so much.[1645.88][1645.88](APPLAUSE). Okay, well, I guess we got to vote the proclamation, huh?
Yes.
Yes.
Move the item.
Have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Please receive five yes votes.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to oral communications for the council and the agency. Cy LaBree. Okay, that's what I thought you said, I, okay. I wasn't keeping track of him, so I didn't know where he went, but, all right, Rod Powell.
Oh, he's gone.
He's out too, okay. Peggy Bergen. No, Peggy's here, we know that. You bet.
Well, actually, I'm here to thank the city council this time. Last week, last meeting, I came with a question about a consent item that was passed, and so I got a call from Monica towards the middle of last week, and she asked me, would I like to come in and they could try to explain what was going on with the issue, and I was very happy, I mean, it just came out of the blue, I was not paying any attention to anything, and it just came to me, and Susan and Monica spent about forty-five minutes today explaining to me, and Verla came along with me, and it's very nice to sometimes get more of an understanding of what's going on, because when you read these little consent items, it just says, "Consent for this, consent for that," but we don't really know what is actually happening behind the scenes, and this did settle my mind a little, because one of the issues, the issues I had was, if we start changing zoning issues, where not everything has to come through the Planning Commission and the city council, more things will be happening that people don't know anything about, but she said, "No, still, the main projects would still have to," if it's changing from a two-story building to the possibility of a larger project, it would still have to come through and be noticed and still be brought forward, so we would still, as citizens, still have. So we would still, as citizens, still have the opportunity to understand what's going on, complain, or be in favor of it. So I was very happy the way they discussed everything and the way they came forward to me. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Tony Flores.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff. I wish the Missanchas would have stuck around a little bit. Eighty-five percent of our water is here, but our rates keep going up. I wanted to talk to her about that, maybe when I'll catch her at her office. Any case, as president of the West Garden Grove Red Association, I've been receiving phone calls on our, I guess, we were spending money out on Harbor, and I had to look at it the last couple of days. Somebody called my attention to the disposition and development agreement of April 13, 2010. $6.9 million we're going to be fronting to a developer. Understood, and I haven't read all of it yet, but I do have some questions on that. But the reason I'm bringing that up, and the reason I'm getting my phone calls and emails, is that they're asking me if we have that kind of money, is there any chance of us putting some type of beautification along Lamson from Manly running east to Lampleiter? We have some in front of Pacifica not to Lampleiter, but as we continue west, it kind of drops off. And I understand, and thank you, folks, for repaving and painting the blacktop, but if you've been out there lately along Lamson, there's still just plain dirt there, it's barren, looks horrible. Another question that I've been given is the sidewalks along Valley View between Lamson and Belgrave, on the east and west sides, the trees are busting up the sidewalks and going into people's residential fences and starting to knock those down. Some of those roots are getting into swimming pools. Hopefully, we can take a look at that. If you guys get time to come out to West Garden Grove, whenever you get time, give me a call. Mr. Mayor, I wanted to come here and also thank you on behalf of the folks. We still had that problem over at the airbase, and it wasn't composting, but it was chipping. Chipping. It weren't composting, they were chipping. Funny thing about compost and chipping, they both smell the same. And I think we had some issues on it again, started getting phone calls, cards, letters, emails, et cetera, about July of 2010, once again. Thank goodness, we had access to Mr. Dalton, who actually went out there again, and Mr. Key Jones. Sorry to bother you with a stench, but thanks for stepping in again. I actually called the CEO of Agribin myself, and it wasn't until after that that he actually pulled it, because I did mention to him, and I hate doing this or threatening anybody with this, but our quality of life was being affected, and anytime you mentioned lawsuit, I guess you can get the chipping out of there. So they removed it, having any problems for the last week and a half, maybe longer, of the odor, it's gone. So any behind-the-scenes work that you may have done, Mr. Mayor, thanks for your time and your phone calls and your return emails, as well as Mr. Jones. So I'll leave that for right now. I'm going to be speaking under public hearing, but thanks again for helping us out with that issue again. Thank you.
Thank you. Rod Powell's left, you said, and Cy LaBree is not back? Okay, then I'll close oral communications and go to the agency.
Okay, at this time, we'll open up the Garden Grove Agency for Community Development. Ms. Bader, would you please call, roll?
Member Dalton?
Here.
Member Doe?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Vice Chair Wynn?
Here.
Chair Broadwater?
Here. We've had no closed sessions on the development agency. Oral communications are finished. Let's go to consent items. We have one item.
Move the item.
Second.
Call for the vote. We have no public hearings.
Wait.
Okay, I'll hold on there.
Councilmember Jones. Motion receive five yes votes.
We have no public hearings, no items for consideration. Matters from agency members and director, anything, gentlemen, ladies. At this time, we will adjourn, and we will adjourn until October 26, 2010, at 5:30 p.m. in the chamber, in the council chambers.
Okay, before resuming the council meeting, I think we'll go to the other room and eat some cake for Mr. Jones, who's celebrating a birthday.
Motion receive five yes votes.
Okay, public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, first, public hearing is to consider three actions related to the proposed Garden Grove Tourism Improvement District, and Greg Blodgett's here to give a staff report on this item.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, tonight we have a public hearing to hear public testimony regarding the Tourist Improvement District, also known as GG TID, to determine if there's a majority protest, and if there's a majority protest, if there is no majority protest, then we will have for consideration both the first ordinance and also the resolutions. So brief background, Garden Grove Hotels have requested that the city form the GG TID to fund collective tourism and marketing for both Anaheim, Orange County Visitors and Conventions Bureau, the VCB, and fund other activities and improvements that promote tourism in the city of Garden Grove. The GG TID includes Garden Grove Hotels that are located along Harbor Boulevard from the north city boundary to Garden Grove Boulevard. It is broken up into two separate benefit zones. Tier one would be those hotels north of Lamson Avenue, and these hotels have a 2.5% per-room assessment per night. And tier-two hotels are those hotels south of Lamson Avenue. These have a half a percent per room, per occupied room night. And the Garden Grove TID would generate approximately $2 million annually. Eighty percent of this is used to fund collectively the marketing efforts through the VCB, and the remainder of the funds are used for tourism promotion activities within Garden Grove. So at this time, staff recommends the city council conduct a public hearing regarding the establishment of the proposed TID and accept public testimony. And if there is no majority protest, introduce and hold the first reading of the ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Garden Grove Establishing the Garden Grove TID pursuant to the Parking and Business Improvement Area Law of 1989," and also adopt a resolution approving the report of the advisory board for fiscal year 2010, 2011 in conjunction with the TID, and adopt a resolution declaring the city's intention to levy assessments for fiscal year 2010, 2011 for the Garden Grove TID. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing done, I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? I'm sorry? I have Verla Lambert's card. Would you like to speak?
See, I knew you missed me. I've been around much lately. Good evening, mayor, council, staff. I'm Verla Lambert of Marble Place here in Garden Grove, resident here for 53 years. When I was among the working force, I had the opportunity to convey with the Board of Equalization. They explained to me the employer didn't have to give benefits, but if he gave benefits to one, you had to give them to all. I seen this report, and of course, the dollar signs still blow my mind. It's a good plan for nine hotels that are multimillion-dollar business and on the stock market. If Garden Grove can afford this, does, if Garden Grove can do this, afford to do this, I would like to see a plan for our restaurants and shops on Main Street in, like this one. A plan for Garden Grove Boulevard and small businesses. They're also in a redevelopment area. I've lived here for 53 years, so it's not like I just moved in and you're just now getting the top few pennies of my tax money. I've been paying this for 53 years. And I would like to see it shared over the whole city of Garden Grove. I mean, like Bob would say, there's not even coffee in here for the few people who have, are here to hear and to participate in the council meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Cy LaBree, I guess, is not back yet, or, okay, you got a card for that also. Peggy Bergen?
Well, this thing just keeps kind of coming up in little bits, keep hearing a little bit here, a little bit there. But now, the assessment on the hotels, my question would be, how would some hotels be worth more than others? Because if they're north of Lamson, they pay 2.5% added on to their rates, I'm assuming that's how we're going to get it, and if it's south of Lamson, it's 5%. But of course, south of Lamson is where we're going to put in this wonderful water park someday. So I would think you would want to get a top dollar out of those people. So I don't really understand why there's a difference in one tier, two tier. Is that because the farther you get down Harbor towards the 22 freeway, the farther you are away from Disneyland, which is in Anaheim? So we're no longer, they're not so worried about how do we look? How are we impressing them? Because we're no longer close to Anaheim. We're a little bit farther away. We're a mile point, mile and one-tenth farther away from Disneyland. Now, the money for this is coming from an added, it's called an assessment, but it's really a tax. So you rent a hotel room, and you're assessed another 2.5% of your room rate. I did have a friend of mine come to Garden Grove, and she stayed at the Crown Plaza, and she was horrified. They were getting ready to check out, and they were told over the phone the rate was X amount of dollars. Well, when they went to check out, they had not told them about any of the taxes, any of the parking fees, any of the, their room rates were over $50 more per night. Granted, she could write most of that off because she was here with the nurses convention, but she said to me, "I won't stay in Garden Grove anymore." We asked them what was the total rate of the room, and they told us without any taxes. So that's one thing. Now, as I was reading down through, a little bit farther down, one of the uses of this money, besides advertising and putting us in the Anaheim tourist area, was our business owners are like McDonald's and that. Are they going to have to, this is having to do with the signage and all of that, would be uniform from Garden Grove Boulevard up through Anaheim? So does that mean all of our sidewalks are going to be pulled out and repaved in that lovely little waving brick effect? Who's going to pay for that? Is that going to come out of our $2 million a year that we've put in? That seems like very redundant work. Are all of our trees going to be like right up at Disneyland, so people will not realize they have left Anaheim and they are now in a different city, Garden Grove? Are we going to lose our identity more than we want to already? So will existing businesses like the McDonald's there at Harbor and Lamson, are they going to have to change their signage? Or will the tourist board pay to have it done? Those are little things you have to remember when you start signing up for these things. We have existing businesses there that we, as citizens, go to, that are they going to have to change and make their signage now uniform? Or is Target going to be able to keep theirs regular bullseye, or is it not going to fall in the aesthetic eye of the Anaheim Tourist Board? And this was one, way down, about two-thirds the way through, there was Section 13, and it was the severability of this act. The city council hereby declares that it would have adopted this ordinance and each section subsection, and it goes all the way down to the word or a portion of a word, irrespective of the fact that any one or more sections, subsections, all the way down to a part of a word again, thereby be declared invalid or unconstitutional. So this statement seemed to say to me that you would vote for this, no matter if it was legal or not legal. That does not seem to make a whole lot of sense to me there. And I just keep thinking, you know, we are a city, we are an independent city. I moved here 32 years ago for all of the things that you guys are taking away. We now have medians, so you can't cross from one side of the street to shop, so you don't shop on Westminster anymore. It's just too much work. You have signals at every single street corner, on every main street, so at rush hour, you pop two cars across every intersection coming into my street at night because of the signals and the way they're timed. You can take three signals to get from Palm Street to cross the intersection at Harbor and Garden Grove because of the signals, the traffic, and the spacing. And everything you do, you keep saying there's no issues with traffic, there's no issue with anything, but everything's a lot slower. I mean, granted, the population has gone up in 30 years, I'm not stupid, but at the same time, we've got to kind of look out for the citizens. And this is my final little reminder on this issue. This was from a convention I went to at the Crown Plaza in 2008. Sunday, September 14th through 16th, 2008, the Crown Plaza, Anaheim Resort, Anaheim, California. No mention of Garden Grove, and we had paid a good bit of money for that piece of property. Thank you.
Tony Flores.
Good evening, mayor, staff, council, I'm Tony Flores. On this Garden Grove Improvement District, or the Garden Grove Tourism Improvement District, I too, at this time, I'm going to lodge a protest. I'm not totally clear on how this is going to work. It, basically, we're just going to pull our monies with Anaheim and give it to some entity that's going to go out and, I guess, do promotions. One question that I do have, and I didn't see it in here, and if it is in here, then somebody can direct me to it, but I didn't see the advertising budgets for these hotels. Is that in the report anywhere? Maybe you can direct me to it when you have time. I was just wondering what the advertising budget is for all these hotels. That's one question. The other question that I have is improvement, I mean, these hotels are brand new, I'm not sure how much improvements they're going to need. In fact, we've got some we're still going to build. For example, that water park, what kind of caught my eye on that water park, and it relates to this Garden Grove Improvement, Tourism Improvement District, the question is this. In the letter addressed to Mr. Blodgett on March 23rd, 2010, and this is contained in the amended DDA, April 13, 2010, on one of the pages, actually, it's Addendum C1, there's a provision, actually, it's a footnote, it's a footnote, and I'll read this. Parking garage construction costs are not included as they will be funded through a Mallory's for the 180 spaces, parking spaces, at $20,000 a space. Five million of this, of these monies that are on the added, or excuse me, the amended DDA for the water park, at 5 million, at 20,000, that's 250 spaces. For 600 rooms, that's just over a third of spaces for 600 rooms. We're talking about adding another 200 rooms, makes it 800, so it drops down to under a third. Any case, my question is this, this Mallory's, I just wanted to clarify that this is not a tax, it is a tax, and are we going to be using the monies from this Garden Grove Tourism Improvement District to help fund this quote-unquote Mallory's that's in this footnote in that letter to Mr. Blodgett, April, excuse me, March 23rd, 2010? Because we've seen parking structures before, we've been funded, here's the COP certificates of participation, April 2002. We have $10 million earmarked for a parking structure here, but that parking structure never came to pass, and we're still making payments of 1.5 million, starting from March 2003 to March 2032. So if we're going to give people money for parking structures, I'm hoping this time we actually see a parking structure, especially if we're talking about another 600 to 800 rooms in the Garden Grove Tourism Improvement District. So that's a question I'd like to have answered on this Mallory's, because Mallory's is a tax, and it hasn't gone out to the people. So with this information that's in front of me now, I would protest the formation of this particular, or the establishment of this particular district. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll close oral communications. Do you want to respond to some of those questions that came up?
Believe, was it Peggy, who asked about the tier-one versus tier-two?
Right.
Yeah, the establishment of a second tier is to Yeah, the establishment of a second tier is to take into account, the further away from the convention center and further away from the resort, Disney Resort, then the less benefit those hotels south of Lamson would expect to realize, and that's why there's a different rate for the hotels further south. What Mr. Flores brought up, having to do with the Water Park Hotel, has nothing to do with the assessment that's being proposed. I believe what he was referring to, as part of that DDA, a $5 million contribution would be made from the agency to the parking facility for the Water Park Hotel. I think the total parking structure was estimated to be between 20 and 25 million, and their developer is anticipating using a Melrose form of financing for the public parking structure, which is a...an additional assessment on their property that they, the property owner, would collect to finance the parking structure. Under the DDA, the agency would contribute up to 5 million towards that 20 to 25 million dollar parking structure, which should be sized enough to handle the 600 hotel rooms plus restaurant. So that's the context of that provision. Relative to this assessment, there are...the proceeds from this assessment in no way are proposed to be used for the Water Park Hotel. There's a variety of things that can be used within the Garden Grove boundaries, but it is not contemplated, nor I...well, I'll just say it's not contemplated, that these proceeds would be used for the Water Park Hotel.
This for order.
This question really doesn't have much to do with it, but a Melrose, can you actually implement a Melrose tax on one piece of property?
That's one of the challenges. So I don't believe they've been given a indication that that is an acceptable financing for the project, and so they're still...
I like...it's...you've got to give them credit.
Got to give them credit.
Yeah.
No, it doesn't quite meet the tax rules.
What about a CFD or some other...
It's the same, same thing. Yeah, same problem.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's a single-purpose facility.
Special assessment?
It would have to...for it to be qualified as tax exempt, it would have to serve as multiple users. It cannot serve one user, which is the likely situation here. So they have a challenge.
So who would be collecting the Melrose?
It's possible.
Yeah. If it's possible, then the property would be assessed against themselves, and then it would go towards...well, I guess technically, the public agency would collect the money and then be remitted back towards the debt service on those...the bonds that would be used to finance that.
Good. Do you have a question? Okay, no questions, I'll undertake a motion.
I move a motion.
Can I have a motion?
I'm sorry. You'll take the...the first action is for the ordinance.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And I think we've already read the title, so you just...
Read them all. He read them all.
Yeah, so the first action is just on the ordinance.
I'll move the ordinance issue.
Second.
Okay, motion second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
And then we can have a separate motion for 7A2 and 7A3.
Okay, for 7A2?
I'll move it.
Have a motion. Second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
7A3? Move it.
Second.
Okay, have a motion, and a second call for the vote.
When it hits the paper, I'd like to see a few more names on it than mine.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just for the record, may we have the city clerk confirm...
She was a little slow, and I was a little fast on that second count, right?
Actually, confirm the fact that we did not receive any written protests from those visitors accommodation facilities that will be subject to the assessment.
All right.
So that there is no majority protest.
Okay.
We did not receive any written protests.
Okay, thank you. 7B.
Mr. Mayor, we have a public hearing to consider amended list of designated positions and disclosure categories pertaining to officials and employees subject to the city's Conflict of Interest Code, and John Clark is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, this is something we have to do every other year as part of the 1974 Political Reform Act, and it basically lists all of the employees and classifications that are subject to different levels of conflict of interest reporting. And the main thing, in fact, the only thing that's changed, is we've had to update some of the job titles and classifications to just reflect the changes over the past two years, so that...
The City Council doesn't have to do this?
City Council's in a separate category.
I noticed you didn't list them.
Yeah, so this covers employees.
Doesn't mean you don't have to file.
Well, you put commissioners in there, so I was just surprised that the council didn't get in it too.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just to clarify that for Councilmember Broadwater, in Exhibit A, on page three, there's a footnote that council members, the city manager, city attorney, city treasurer, and planning commissioners who manage public investments are required to file separately, and therefore, they're not included in this designation. So there is a note to that effect, that the council members and others of us specifically are required to file, but it's just not in this particular listing.
That's a public hearing, under public hearing, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'll open a public hearing. Does anyone like to speak on that matter? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Have a motion?
Second.
And a second call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
I was for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, 9A is a word of contract to RJ Noble Company for the Central Garden Grove Street Rehabilitation Overlay Phase 2 Project, and Keith Jones is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, in December of 2009, the city received its first allocation from the county under Prop 1B of $500,000, and we did a Phase 1 Central Garden Grove Street Rehabilitation Project in fiscal year 2009, 2010. And we were fortunate enough to receive an additional $500,000 from the county for Central Garden Grove Overlay, and so this would be Phase 2. And we bid the project out according to the Public Contract Code. The lowest responsible bidder that came back was RJ Noble. We researched them and found them to be qualified and competent, and there were no discrepancies in their record of doing service with Garden Grove. The fiscal impact is 500,000, again, is coming from Prop 1B county funds to the city of Garden Grove, and the additional $145,000 will come from traffic control relief funds, so there's no impact to the general fund for this project. As it therefore recommended, that we award the contract to RJ Noble Company for the Prop 1B Central Garden Grove Street Rehabilitation Overlay Phase 2 in the amount of $645,411.33. It authorized the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. Completes my report.
Okay. Any questions for staff? If not, I'll undertake a motion.
Do we have the streets that we'll be working on mainly?
Yes. And they should have come as an attachment to your...
Page 32.
You couldn't get more pages in here, I mean...
Attachment A, page 32 lists the streets where they work. Well, is that true?
Looks like, right? Ramona, is that what you're talking about? Ramona Sandra?
Looks like it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, if not further questions? I have a motion. Second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, number 10.
Number 10 is ordinance for second reading. That's the ordinance of the City Council, the City of Garden Grove, adopting development agreement between Olson Company and the City of Garden Grove.
Move the issue.
Second.
Have a motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, matters, Mr. Broadwater.
I had something on my mind, but it has slipped away. Happy birthday, Mr. Jones. I think you're a fine young man. That's about it.
Happy birthday, Councilman Jones. Also, I want to remind the families that we have the Halloween Scary House at the Old Black Angles at the corner of Euclid and Garden Grove, and it's starting October 8th every weekend. So you can contact our recreation department for more information on that. And also, I want to remind everyone to...about our campaign to buy in Garden Grove, and I'd like to take this opportunity to mention the return of the city shop local campaign called Buy in Garden Grove. This year, you'll be hearing a lot more about the importance of keeping sales tax in our city and patronizing local businesses. And one of the newest businesses in our community is the Burlington Coat Factory, and you can go there and get the company store items for as much as 60, 70% off, and it's at the corner of Garden Grove and Harbor, very big store. Very soon, the city will be featuring a Buy in Garden Grove webpage on the city website on www.cigardengrove.ca.us. On this page, participating businesses will be offering a special discount and incentive for shoppers. So if you want to see a list of free items or discounts, you can go on to this website. And also, we will have a consumer webpage for a consumer to go in and learn more about the businesses in the city. I also encourage businesses to visit the city website to include the business in the listing and include their offers in the listing. And that's all I have. And again, happy birthday, Councilman Jones.
Mr. Jones.
Thanks for all the happy birthdays. I was just going to promote the haunted house at the Old Black Angus, but Deena beat me to it, so I have nothing else to add.
Mr. Jones.
I want to add to the happy birthday to Councilmember Jones. Last Wednesday, on the 6th, I went to an event, and I haven't been as inspired like that in a long time. The event was put on by the Simon Family Foundation, who works in conjunction with the Garden Grove Unified School District to select each year 16 Simon Scholars. And now, these are not just merely students who have excelled in school, which is good in itself, but these students have overcome great personal hardship to achieve the level of success that they have in school. And what the foundation has done is to actually take them in, and over the course of a year, work with them in terms of providing them tutors to improve, make even more improvement in their work and study habits, give them help in schools so they can do even better, give them their own private laptop to keep, take them out to restaurants and teaching them etiquette, and giving them access to the working wardrobe that they have for the foundation, so they pick out an outfit, like a suit for young ladies at dress, so that they can go to formal functions and job interviews and college interviews. And more importantly, each Simon Scholar is given $16,000 a year to go to any college of their choosing. And we heard from each of the 16 Simon Scholars, and to hear stories about being victims of domestic violence, and then having to be shuttled from foster home to foster home, and in the meantime, still working to maintain 4.0 GPAs, and participate in extracurricular activities, is really inspiring. And I want to take this opportunity to, you know, inform people of their scholarship and the foundation. And if you have children, or, you know, young people that may qualify for this, they should look into it next year and try to apply for it and compete for it. I think it's a very worthwhile program. The college enrollment rate for these scholars from previous years is just astronomical, is like almost 100%. So, you know, it's extremely gratifying to see this type of effort going on in our community. And I applaud the Simon Family and their foundation tremendously, and also the school board for our city, Garden Grove Unified School District, in working with the foundation to make all of this happen.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. Yesterday, unfortunately, we had very short notice, like two and a half days ago, but in Garden Grove, we were fortunate enough to have a section of the Berlin Wall. I think it was like 16 feet tall and four...three or four feet wide. And anyway, the nice thing about it was, it was just a last-minute thing. It was actually on its way to Ronald Reagan Park in San Bernardino. But we were able to get it for about six hours in Garden Grove. And being at the park there, we were able to have several hundred students from Bolsa Grande come over and look at it, and hear actually some speeches from people that were from East Berlin that were trapped when there was a division and the wall was in place. It was really inspiring, and a lot of the young folks, many of them Vietnamese, in fact, they have a better understanding because of their parents and grandparents having gone through what they did, so they have a better understanding of communism and things like that. But as the next generation comes along, unless these things are reinforced, we all forget about them. And, you know, as everybody knows, Mr. Reagan said, "Mr. Gorbachev, tear down this wall." And it happened, although many people thought it never would. But it was really something, I think, that people looked at, and, I mean, there were people that had tears in their eyes that were touching it. It was a very, very touching moment. So I'm glad that I was able to get out there for that. Unfortunately, we couldn't keep it in the city, but again, several hundred people were able to enjoy the benefit of seeing it and learning more about it. Happy birthday to Mr. Jones. And one of the things that somebody had brought up was what's going on with the composting at the base. Mr. Jones actually has been very involved in it, and he and I tomorrow are meeting with the general and some other city officials, adjacent city officials, to kind of protest what's going on out there. There is still the odor coming and a lot of things, and they're assuring us that they're going to stop everything. And the last visit out there, quite frankly, they really hadn't been doing that. Or they changed Webster's dictionary definition of composting. It wasn't the same as what we understood it to be. But anyway, either Mr. Jones or I'll have a report, a next council meeting, to keep people posted on what's going on and what progress we've made there. I think that covers it, so we'll adjourn until the next regular meeting, Tuesday, October 26, 2010, at 5:30 PM here. Thank you very much.